We are going to be discussing Resolution twenty four nineteen sixty two. Approving the purchase and sale agreement for acquisition of property located at nineteen. Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped over public comments. I apologize. I was getting the look over here. Mark, would you check and see if there's anyone signed up in the back, please, senior? Thank you. I do appreciate that. I was so excited. I was getting ahead of myself. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay. Mr. Anderson, Julian, welcome. And let me read my, do I have my? I don't agree with it. Is it on the bottom? Oh, here we go. The council will not be accepting online public comments. For the record, this portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address. The council on agenda items. However, the mayor of council may not respond to comments from the public. If the comments are of a nature that the council does not have influence or control over, then the mayor may request the speaker, the speaker suspend their comments. The mayor or council may direct staff to follow up on items brought up by the public. Comments are limited to a three minute time limit. Thank you, Julian, for your patience. Welcome.
Sir, thank you. I'm Julian Anderson. I live in Lake Forest Park. Am I on here, believe? Okay. I am most appreciative of your resolution twenty four nineteen sixty two on your agenda. For approval tonight to agree to acquire the beautiful property at one nine zero zero one fortieth place northeast. Thus, I am most appreciative of the special efforts of Mayor French, even his eagerness tonight. Several city staff members, the city attorney, whose efforts and enthusiasm were essential for this result. The patience and persistence of citizens who live. Close by this property are an essential motive force for this result. I think that the care and gentle development of Five Acre Woods. Adjacent to this property demonstrated the wisdom of this acquisition to the property owners. As well as to the city and to others. This forest stewardship has been led by Lake Forest Park Stewardship Foundation and its president, Kim Jolson. And of course, is reliant on many dedicated volunteers. As it was for Five Acre Woods, this acquisition will likely be possible only because of funds that originate beyond the borders of this city. This challenges the stewards of this park to understand that it is an important regional asset. So to all the progenitors of this wonderful result, I say, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, Julian. Let's see, at this time, there's no one else in council chambers, so I guess we will be closing public comments. Thank you, everybody. And with that, I'll lead this off here. So. For the edification of the public, this property opportunity came up through the good graces of. Both the Stewardship Foundation and the property owners a number of months ago, last October, I believe. And there have been discussions about. Bringing this property into fold as it is second growth. Magical type of property directly contiguous with Five Acre Woods. And additionally, it makes Five Acre Woods a more complete. Unit as a, as an accessible, when I say accessible. Usable. Place to enjoy nature. I'm trying to think of the right words here. So right now, the property is being considered for acquisition, subject to council approval of the final. Resolution tonight. I want to say from the get go, a big. An enormous thanks to the family, the roses. Who Marilyn, who is an extraordinary human being. She is a bright light. In our community has been here for many, many, many decades, and it has been her wish. For a long time to have this property remain in the park as she talks about it. Her daughter Lori. And the various members of their family who have participated in this. I'd be remiss if I did not thank Rick Bender. Who has been a silent and very behind the scenes person in this process as well as. Kim Jolson and Julian Anderson from the Stewardship Foundation, as well as many members of the Stewardship Foundation. This is an extraordinary opportunity. And it really is, it is. More than once in a lifetime. It is once in a, in a very long. Century or more to have this kind of opportunity. Having said that, as Mr. Anderson indicated in his public comments. The, it is the intent of this administration to find. A way to repay ourselves for this purchase price. We did not borrow money specifically for this property for outs, from outside. Sources and we are. Very optimistic about receiving grant funding from potentially a couple of sources in the next. Grant cycle. So it is our fervent hope that this community will not have to spend more than. Maybe a quarter of the purchase cost, possibly less. And beginning in October, those conversations will be continuing in earnest. Both with the county and with other sources such as conservation futures. I'd be remiss if I did not thank our staff, Mr. Hill, who has helped drag this across the line. Kim Adams Pratt and Lindsay Vaughn, who's our finance director. Who has done an outstanding job in making sure that we're not getting out over our skis in terms of our financial commitments. Having said that. I will say before we have a conversation on this particular topic. Each time that I've been up at this property. Ms. Rose has a driveway sensor. And each time that I've been sitting there having discussions with this family, the driveway sensor has been tripped, not by humans. But by deer and other animals. And it is pretty extraordinary to see the, the magic of this location. And how it complements Five Acre Woods. Having said that, I also would like to make sure that we respect the privacy of Ms. Rose. She is going to be remaining there as long as she wishes. And with that, I will open it up to any questions, colleagues. Thank you for your indulgence. Mr. Lebo.
Thank you. I'm supportive of the resolution to purchase the property. I just had some couple of questions. Is the intent to pass the resolution this evening?
It is.
I would like to think that that's not in the best interest of the public, having only been given notice of this meeting and no clear indication that it is in fact for. Action other than it references discussion. And I think a purchase of this magnitude. Should be clearly labeled for the public to comment on with regard to purchasing, because it is a significant purchase. Again, I'm in favor of, of this purchase, but I think that the timing of action. Is a bit premature without allowing the public the opportunity to speak for or against this. And then just procedurally. As a life estate. There are provisions for Ms. Rose to maintain the property, including insurance. But it's not clear if the, there's a default for failure to maintain or procure. The insurance. It reads as though our option is either to require performance or to terminate the agreement. But that doesn't seem in the city's best interest. If the owner fails to maintain the property, including insurance or pay for utilities. There are other remedies that I think could be applied in the event that they. Do not, such as default and termination or. The city's right to take over the property or other remedies that would be less draconian. But would serve an interest other than encumbering the city if the owner fails to maintain insurance. Property or utilities.
Thank you, Mr. Lebo. A vice chair for Tony, and then maybe we can have some of these questions addressed.
All right. So actually, I do have, in fact, I have a question. This speaks to Councilmember Lebo's point. Is there a time sensitivity? To our action tonight? In other words, is the purchase agreement ready to go and there's a time limit on what we need to do this?
No, not, not in that regard. It's just a question of we are, our next meeting is. Three weeks out here. That's one of the reasons why I wanted to bring it to you folks early, so that there was an opportunity here. It's taken a little bit longer than we expected to get to where we. Where we want it to be. However, that's through no. No fault of anyone. It's just a matter of summer and various things that are going on. So to answer your question, no. However, I really do believe that. Time is. Time is, is passing. And I, and I think that there's, there's a considerable amount of. We are almost a year into this conversation. Offline, and I would like to see this moving forward a pace. Mr. Hill, is there anything you wanted to add to the mix on the question of the insurance or the?
Sorry, just getting caught back up to speed, but I believe the insurance, the property owner's representative has reached out to a couple. Insurance agencies, it looks like they will be able to procure the insurance necessary. It's just it wasn't ready at the time for tonight's meeting. Otherwise, we would have included a little bit more details in an additional addendum. I do agree with Councilmember Lebo that maybe there could be a better way to not just terminate the PSA because of a lack of insurance. And give a little bit more time, but I don't have a lot of details on that.
It's, it's also about maintenance, so maintaining the insurance and what happens if the insurance is not maintained. Same thing with. Utilities and other maintenance costs. It's about some way to safeguard that in fact they are maintained during the life estate period.
Thank you. Colleagues, other questions or comments? Very quiet group this evening. Vice Chair for Tony.
This is more of a point of order kind of question. Do we need three touches on this?
I would have to, I, yeah, I did.
I believe you would have to waive the three touch rule. This is the first time this has been publicly discussed.
Well, it's really, it's, yes, council member, good.
I tend to agree with Councilmember Lebo that the public hasn't had a chance to really understand what we're doing and to. Push it through right now without adequate, it would just alienate our citizens. We need to be more. Transparent with what we're doing with that, my, is my comment.
I'd just like to add that I agree with that as well. With what Councilmember Lebo has presented.
Thank you. That's real. Thoughts, comments? Oh, I'm sorry. And then Deputy Mayor Bodie, I did, Mr. Hand, please.
I, I, since it doesn't appear that we have a timing impact. I'm leaning towards letting the community celebrate with us before we move forward with this. But at the same time. I want to, I want to see this happen. I want to make sure it happens. This, this is her vision for her property. And. We have, our, our vision is aligned. And this is our opportunity to do it. And I think it has taken longer than I think originally anticipated. And I don't want to keep her in suspense. I want her to know that this is a. Council has approved this, that she has our buy-in, so that she feels comfortable moving forward. I don't want her to feel that we are. On offense.
Thank you, Councilmember. Deputy Mayor Bodie.
Yes, I have to say Councilmember Riddle expressed my sentiments exactly, which is that I, I. On the one hand, I am, I'm quite torn. On the one hand, I absolutely think that it's much better for our community. To have more of a chance to weigh in. And on the other hand, I want Ms. Rose to know. That this is just such an important opportunity for us, and we so appreciate. Her willingness to work with us and make this happen for the future. And as a legacy for her and a real improvement for our city. So I, I for one am torn. Unfortunately, we, we did cancel our council meeting for this Thursday coming up. Do we have, I, I would welcome the opportunity to have a short special meeting. With this on the agenda, but before our, our next meeting scheduled for three weeks from now, but. I don't know what the realm of the possible is. So, so thank you, Councilmember Riddle. You, you expressed my sentiments exactly.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Ellen, please.
I think, I think it would be fair to. Communicate with Ms. Rose. That the council would like to move forward on this to just remind her and refresh. Her hopes that we would like to move forward on this, but to explain that I think she would be understanding. Hopefully, I haven't met her, but. I would hope that she would understand that the, the need to really. Involve the public. So they. People have a chance to express their. Thoughts and feelings on that. But I mean, is that possible to, would that be fair to express that to her and? To let her know that this is something we're excited about, but maybe something needs to happen before that.
Certainly, that could, that could, that could absolutely happen. We're timeframe wise, we're looking at. Hold up my calendar here. We're looking at. Calendar is not going to be happy. To the question of Deputy Mayor Bodie's comment about a special meeting, that's something I considered. Requesting of the council, but we're. But that is an additional amount of work. So yeah, we're basically three and a half, we're three and a half weeks. We are. Twenty five days away from the next council meeting. And so my feeling would be honestly is. And I completely agree with, with everyone's sentiment, particularly Mr. Lebo's about the transparency question. If the council's amenable, trying to figure out a, a schedule that, to have an additional special meeting to. To have, give people a chance to weigh in if they so choose. I don't know what that looks like in terms of timeframe, and I have to ask also staff. Mr. Hill. And other folks, what, what that looks like, because it's always difficult. When we did. Ironically, we canceled the meeting for Thursday, but we've added a bunch of other meetings, so we're.
Put it back. Notice.
I guess the point I would want to make is Thursday's not that far from now. I don't know if that gets to the council members' points of giving additional time for the public. To absorb this and weigh in. So that, that's a question for the mayor and council. Some of us won't be available Thursday night. Should already have other commitments, and I don't know what council looks like, but. You have time to notice it. You only need 24 hours, but it would be a special meeting again and just be the one item.
Mr. Lebo, you're looking back. Well, I was thinking also, where are you looking at in terms of colleagues? How about the following week?
I would. I would be amenable to the following week.
Twenty ninth? Or twenty? I'm regrettably, well, no, I will be in town on the 26th, actually, come to think of it. Councilman Riddle.
I, I will be out of town as well on the 29th.
On the 29th.
Yeah, and I guess I, we don't have the best community engagement at special meetings. They're not, you know, promoted as, as, as much. As our regular meetings because they're used to those. There's a cadence. They know when it's going to happen. So I question whether a special meeting is going to allow additional. Community engagement at all. How do we get that out the week before school starts and the week before the four day weekend? So I'm, I'm wondering if it's, if that's a useful time. For us to even try to engage with the community, whereas. The following weeks make more sense, but then we're just getting close to the 12th council meeting anyways. I'm leaning towards. Going forward with this. But having time in our next council meeting to share with the community why. We, why each individually, we want to move forward with, we, we did move forward with this. So to have that conversation with the community, but understand sort of the weird timing that we're in right now. With this particular process because they want to, there's a closing date. Towards the end of September.
Well, let's, let's take a look at, thank you, Councilmember. Let's take a look at calendar here. So we're talking 25 days out before our next regular meeting. Anything that we do between now and then will be a special meeting if I'm not mistaken. Okay, so the question is, the meeting on Thursday is not an enormous amount of time. However, it is a regularly scheduled time, and I don't think that. A huge number of people have expected that the council, the meeting would be canceled specifically. So that's one thought. The next thought, the next question is, it sounds as though a number of you are going to be out of town on the 29th. How about one, one week from today? Who is available?
I'm not.
You're not available on the 26th. Okay. I can make myself available, but. I'm just looking at calendar because if we get, start getting into the 12th. Then we're into. Well. Oh, Deputy Mayor Bodie, I apologize.
I'm available the 26th or the 29th. I do like the idea of doing it next week. So that there is an additional opportunity. I, I know that this Thursday is too soon, even though it was a regularly scheduled meeting, but. I, I, I think. We should pick the least worst date for next week.
Fair enough. Vice Chair for Tony.
So I want to go on the record as I'm in support of the, the whole idea, but the question is, can we get a news blast through our usual channels out by?
Sure.
Then?
Yeah, by next Thursday. Who is not available? You're not available?
Which, sorry.
On the 29th, one week from this Thursday.
I, I will not be able to come in that evening, and I won't be able to remote in as far as I know.
I'm pretty sure I'm going to be out of the country, so I don't know what my wifi will be like.
Okay.
So I can try.
Get it from Korea.
Like, can I ask a question of the administration? As I understand it, there are, there's two. Two items of that need be. Two contingencies, is what I'm trying to say. One is inspections and one is city council approval. None of the work that the city needs to do to move forward on this would be held up if we didn't approve this. You, you can do that independently from our approval?
Yeah, I mean, as far as the inspection, we don't need council approval. I know that. There was language included here for professional services, but I don't anticipate this going above the mayor's signing authority, so we would be able to move forward with the inspection. But since it was in this resolution, I was waiting to see how council acted tonight before moving forward with that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, let me ask one other quick question, and then maybe we'll have to huddle council leadership on this and see if we can find a date that's the least worst, as Deputy Mayor Bodie said. Are there, are there dates in the next week, in the middle of the week? Are you? Both Councilmember Riddle and Council, Councilmember Saunders, are you out of town the whole week?
I am. I would, I feel like. The 29th would be the, the best for me because I'm, I'm, I'm going to attempt to zoom in. We'll just, I'm just not sure with the connections like with my carrier, so.
Customer.
Yeah, I will also be out of town. I'll be on the East Coast, so in theory, I'll be available to zoom in. I would. Of all the days next week, I would prefer Thursday, if only because it's the most normal of a day for us. And if the goal is to get community engagement. Having it on the day of the week when we usually meet would seem to be the best approach.
Fair enough. I think that's very reasonable. Colleagues, Mr. Levo?
Twenty ninth is.
Miss, Miss Cook, yeah?
I guess.
Okay. Let's, yes.
We do not allow proxy vote, do we?
Not that I've, no.
I don't, I think that's not allowed. Okay. Just checking.
Seven PM?
Mr. Hill, are you available for the 29th? Okay. And Mr. Anderson, are you though? No. All right, colleagues, we will, we will pencil in the 29th. We'll have a confirmation for you tomorrow. Is that?
At six or at seven?
I'm assuming since this is a special meeting, let's do, let's do six. Earlier is better for, pretty much for everybody, I think. So. Is that amenable to everyone's sensibilities? Excellent. Thank you very much, colleagues. And we will make sure we get a news flash out and we'll get some other things moving forward and. Really appreciate your consideration. And to our friends who are. We're zooming in, this is democracy at work, and we will, I have every expectation that we'll cross the line here on this one successfully, so. Vice Chair for Tony.
And all of our audience out there, please get the word out about this, and that way we can get a sufficient amount of public comment. That would be great.
Yeah, thank you. And on point, we did receive a letter from Kim Jolson, President of Stewardship Foundation in support of Resolution twenty four nineteen sixty two. A very thoughtful letter. I believe you all received that. So, okay, with that, we're going to move on. Appreciate that, everyone. Exciting times. Moving on to, well, this is easy because it's in the middle. The, the item B, capital improvement plan for 2025, 2026. Hot off the presses, literally, from Mr. Parago. So hot, I burned my fingers on it.
These are beyond the next five years, so this is for information.
You can read it.
Hey. Well said, Mr. Parago, you have my board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. It's great to be with you again. Tonight, we've got the, as. City Administrator Taylor mentioned, we've got the CIP. Toolled up for 25 and 26, as well as the next four years after that, which you have in your hand now. For context, you can see some of the projects here going on into those, those years. Again, we've got 49 items that are on the list now.
Can we maybe point the mic a little closer to you?
I think it drives around the room, too. I'm not sure. Okay, hopefully this will be better. My, my voice does not carry, but. We'll do what we can here. As I said, there's. Five different categories that we have our CIP broken into. We'll start with facilities at the top, first handful of items there. For item number one is the city hall facilities. With that, we've got budgeted for 25 and 26, $300,000 for projects that will be. Immediately needed here in city hall. Two of those items that are the big ticket items would be. Changing out the air conditioning units on top of the roof, as well as the new roof membrane needs to be replaced. It's the, the structure is now 22, 23 years old. And it's starting to show its age. So those are the two big, big ticket items that will be done over those two years.
Do you want us to comment as you go along or at the end?
Why don't we do group? Why don't we do group, group by group?
Group by group, sounds great.
Okay. Uh, the second item, again, these are relatively small items here, uh Public Works Office Building. Uh, that uh building is is of age. It's a residential building. Um, it's likely that the roof will need to be replaced in the next couple of years, as well as some other um accommodations might be need. Might be needed and on the interior to make it a little bit more comfortable and livable for for our folks. Uh, and then the third item is the Public Works Main and Shop. Again, just a small amount, five thousand dollars there that we're asking for. For each year, just to accommodate some of the additional enforcement equipment that we have and just try to make it a little bit more organized and functional for our staff. And then the fourth item is the um over at Public Works Facility, we've got a grant to install some E V chargers. Um, the grant doesn't charge, doesn't cover the entire amount, covers seventy five percent, seventy five thousand dollars worth of it. The other one hundred and thirty five would be on us to uh provide for that, uh that would allow for ten uh E V chargers. At our Public Works Facility, and that would um get us ready for um hopefully the next next few years down the road, once more E Vs are available for us. But those are the ones that are associated with facilities.
Colleagues, questions about facilities in that group? Yes, Councilmember Riddle.
Um, just as we look at the. City Hall facilities and especially upgrading or replacing the rooftop unit, is there? But does, are you planning on perhaps upgrading it something more efficient, something that's gonna maybe respond to the climate plan, things of that nature?
Yeah, after twenty years, I'm sure there's things that are much more efficient than what we have now, so absolutely that would be. Yeah.
Vice Chair for Tony.
And uh following along those lines, um, you know, I'm I'm very intrigued by the idea of having alternative energy sustainability investments. Can you describe a little bit about what that might be?
I'm sorry.
The alternative energy slash sustainability investments. On on at City Hall, sorry, I should say.
Oh, as as far as uh Ryan Solar, is that? Okay, yeah. Um, yeah, as you see in the later years, we do have some some opportunities to uh put rooftop solars on City Hall. Um, structurally, it will it will uh sustain that. Um, the other option, another thing I'd like to do is is have canopies out in the parking lot. Uh, with solar panels like a lot of times that they do down in the south, um, it's very. Uh, very common down there, so um, yeah, that might be an option also up here.
It may ask a follow up.
Absolutely.
Um, would that be uh attached to a battery bank possibly?
That would be the intent is to have all, hopefully that that would. Uh, be all that banked energy, so that way when we do have downtimes, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be without without power, yes, so.
Right, because as we saw, the diesel generator didn't quite kick in when it needed to kick in the other month, so.
That's correct, that's that's, yeah, exactly why we need something like that, so.
Glad we're thinking about it.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, moving on to, unless there are any other questions about facilities, we're moving on to parks.
I had a question.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, about the E V charger. Has there been discussion about where you might locate? Those E V chargers on the. In here at City Hall?
Uh, we haven't gotten there yet. The E V chargers that we're talking about are at the Public Works Facility.
Oh. Not so not not available for the public.
Correct, not at this time.
That's something maybe later.
Yeah, that would be E V E V chargers that we would have here. Uh, if we could get solar panels up in the parking lot, um, we could do that here.
Okay, I understand that's in the plan, though, for the future.
That's in the outer years, yes. And and of course, we would cut down grants as as much as we possibly could.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, Mister Hill.
Um, and just want to point out for Councilmember Saunders that um we did. Pursue a couple different avenues for E V chargers here at City Hall. Um, first was more of a regional approach. You remember they had the whole string of pearls, you know, throughout along state routes. Um, as we explored that with other municipalities and a consultant, it quickly became obvious that we were not going to um do well in that arena. It was too large of an arena for us. There was a smaller arena that our previous project manager, the funds that he got for. Public Works, who also applied for funds here, City Hall does not score well due to its location. Um, they look a lot at um. Lower income, the the impacts of that, what's surrounding it. Um, and this this property just does not score well with the current funding cycle, so we will continue to explore that. And if there are new funding sources available, but we just, we tried and we uh we're not successful at this location.
Thank you.
Please get to me, okay. Um, so the next gag right there I have is parks. We've got a couple of projects that are associated with that. Um, the first one that we have is number, uh, if my eyes don't deceive me, it's number sixteen. Uh, I take that back seventeen. Um, updating the pros plan, uh, we've dedicated thirty thousand uh dollars to update that. And that will be done in twenty twenty five. Uh, the next item is the Lakefront Park Development, both the design and the construction. In twenty twenty five, we've got half million dollars for the design as well as uh almost two hundred thousand dollars for construction. And we do have some construction money that's identified in twenty twenty six, and this would be a good point for me to say, just to uh draw your attention to the legend at the bottom. Um, any of the numbers that are highlighted in in red, um, those are um. Funding challenges that we have. The items that are, there's a couple of items that are in green, uh, those are projects based on the availability of funds from the traffic cameras. And then finally, uh, emergency projects, those are the ones that are identified under the action plan column. More towards the bottom in the um. Surface water, stormwater categories. So with that, I would just, I'd just draw your attention to, again, we've got in twenty twenty six, we've got a huge uh funding um. Decision to make with the uh lakefront property.
Yeah, I serve for Tony.
So um I noticed that uh there's not an allocation for the McKinnon Creek Trail, but that doesn't preclude the council from working on something like an interlocal agents uh agreement with the uh water district or anything like that, right? Because that costs no money.
That that would be correct. Well, the reason for some of these items being on here is are either legacy items and or things that council could do something about, or. Just to to not lose track of them to make, just make sure that they're top of mind.
Understood, thanks.
Mister Furatoni, I would just say. Did you see the article about Crookburg Gardens today? There you go. So please continue, Mister Parago.
Okay. Alright, so that finishes uh the parks again, just a couple of items there, yes.
Um, yes, thanks. Um, I see on parks, there's two, there's an S P U and a Sims that are listed. I guess these are properties the city acquired. Could you just remind us when we acquire those two properties?
I don't recall when they were purchased, but one of them is Five Acre Woods, and the other one is um the property. Um, across the street from uh at Animal Lakers.
By Brookside.
By Brookside, got it right.
Okay, so so where it says the S P U, that is synonymous with the current Five Acre Woods Park.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, so thank you, uh, Councilmember Goldman, that's an excellent question. So we acquired that part parcel as a surplus property. Five Acre Woods from Seattle Public Utilities. Um, that was the seller at the time. They were originally going to build a reservoir there, and they retained the property for a very long period of time and finally surplus it out, and we were successful. Through the help of our friends in the Sturridge Foundation, um, acquiring the property. Vice Chair for Tony.
And and to further clarify, the property that's on Thirty Seventh Avenue that's referred to, that's the one that does, no, not sorry, not Thirty Seventh One, uh.
Yes, it is on.
Yeah, Thirty Seventh, yeah, that's the, is that the one that we're informally calling Big Tree?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah, and the Sims um uh. Uh, family Sims and um Kelly. Yes, Kelly Sims Kelly, uh, were instrumental in helping us secure that property.
Thanks.
Thank you for the question. Councilmember Riddle.
I am looking at the master plan, existing parks and trail systems, and there's. There's some uh funding in there for project development and planning. Does that dovetail with our transportation work about uh sidewalks and safe routes and the kind of? Are those connected or are they separate?
I believe the updated sheets will show that there's actually uh no, no funds for that. It's been changed. If I have that correct.
Okay, cool. Updated sheet would be my packet.
What was handed out to you today?
Okay.
There was a last minute.
Maybe. Yeah, so I'm looking, item seventeen, my line says.
Well, that that is the pros plan. I'm sorry, that's pros plan update.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, because it 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 talks about. Access, safe walkways, pathways, and ever means of travel to communicate between, so I'm just making sure that this is somehow tied with our. In construction side in the transportation section, and that. They're gonna dovetail.
Yeah, I think what you're talking about is probably gonna be a much bigger project than. Than an update to the pros plan.
Well, I get, I'm just wondering because we're gonna be doing planning for those, and there's money in both buckets, and I don't want us to spend money in two different street planning projects if they're not talking to each other.
Un- understood.
Okay.
Mister Hill.
So we. We're doing some editing on the fly today, as we talked um. Among the directors, Director Hoffman, and talking about capacity um and the need for the pros plan to be updated in his discussions with R C L. So we have a very strong plan, um, something that can be done with. Mostly internal with some consultant support, and that's the thirty thousand dollars. There are some other efforts that you're referring to that you get into the detailed sheets with those trails and things. There will be a future effort, but we've got to get staffed up before we can do that, and that's just not feasible in this upcoming biennium. Um, you know, if something changes and suddenly we hire everybody in twenty twenty five that we currently can't fill, maybe. You know, made by adjustment for twenty six, but um currently we're staffed out for for projects.
Thank you for that clarification.
Oh, it's other questions. All right, uh, please, Mister Parago.
Thank you. Uh, moving on down uh to the transportation section, um, a lot of these things you've probably seen before these projects, um. Uh, the first two are very very common for us. It's the overlay program that we've dedicated three hundred thousand dollars for that for both years. As well as a hundred thousand dollars for A D A compliant ramps. Should there be any necessary in those those sections of of roadways that need it? The next item is the Brookside Sidewalk Program or Project. Uh, that's a project being fully funded by Sound Transit that runs from the fire station down to five twenty two on Brookside. Uh, on the side of of Arco, uh, they're giving us uh two hundred sixty sixty thousand dollars to design and build that section to provide access to the five twenty two. Moving down uh Safe Streets, that's the traffic calming group. Uh, we've dedicated the same thing as we did in the past, fifty thousand dollars uh each year. And then there's two projects that are um. Kind of legacy projects, if you will, on Thirty Seventh Avenue from uh Brookside uh Elementary, as well as Brookside at uh L F P Elementary. Those are two projects, again, one's at four hundred thousand dollars, he has a two two fifty, two hundred fifty thousand. Um, those are highlighted in green, um, indicating those would be projects that we. May be able to pursue, provided that there's funding for that, uh, primarily through the traffic uh traffic cameras. Uh, as well as staffing, so there's a couple of caveats to that, to those two projects. The um. Next project is the Roundabout. Uh, we're all familiar with that project. Again, we've got the the numbers there for transportation capital at uh three point two four five million and roughly three point eight million for the grant funding that we've got. Uh, the next item is new, though. Uh, we do have a guardrail replacement. Uh, King County used to do the replacements and repairs for us. They no longer do that. Um, so we're going to be in a position to um have to do some of the design and replacement um with contractors to do that for us. And that rounds out the. Transportation section.
Colleagues, questions on transportation? Mister Levo.
I'll defer to Councilmember Riddle, she was first.
That's my little.
Thank you. Do we have all the guardrails located in the city that so we can start tracking?
We we do, we do.
Thank you.
I would continue to ex um. Request that the city develop a holistic proposal for overlay and traffic calming and sidewalks. Um, sidewalks are the most expensive. Way to provide um. Safe access for pedestrians. I think there are other alternatives that we should explore in a more holistic way. If we try to build our way into safe pedestrian corridors through sidewalks, we will never ever finish. But we have seen that providing even simple curbs on. Roads such as um Thirty Fifth Avenue Northeast do provide safe opportunities for people to. Either walk or um near schools, so. I would very much like to see, and I advocated for the last couple of years, that we get a holistic plan about how we integrate. Traffic calming, overlay, and safe pedestrian mobility and not focus on sidewalks, but rather safe mobility. Um, because I think we're just going to forever never. Resolve issues on key. Roads within Lake Forest Park if we only focus on sidewalks.
Thank you, Mister Levo. Any other questions or comments on transportation? That's from Goldman.
Um, yeah, I'll. Yeah, I'll echo what Councilmember Lebo said, that I would also very much like to see a holistic rubric for where we do mobility and overlay improvements. Um, and I think we can look to our neighbors to the west. I think Shoreline has that sort of a holistic approach in place, and so. Um, if we could adopt what they have as a way of scoring where we'll have the most bang for our buck, so to speak.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Chair for Tony.
Thank you, and uh just to add on to the previous two council members' points, um, I'm wondering, uh, is it literally sidewalks that we're asking for? Is or is it just shorthand for pedestrian safety improvements?
Um, and what context?
Sorry, in the context of the Thirty Seventh Avenue uh Northeast projects?
Uh, those are the installation of sidewalk. That's the, again, those are legacy projects from probably eight to ten years ago, best I can tell.
Thirty years ago.
I'm sorry, thirty.
Unfortunately, okay, yeah.
Can I do a follow up?
Please.
Are 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 we committed to sidewalks then, or could that still be modified to do something like multimodal and the extended curbs like Councilmember Lebo was talking about?
We could certainly look at those options.
Street.
You know, if you have.
I wasn't gonna address that specifically, but um to Councilmember Levo's point, he he has asked for this, the more holistic approach, and that is something that um. Director Parago and Transport Group are working on. It's something that will be part of um his presentation to council about. His budget requests in September when he comes before you, but um the target is to bring that. Initial idea to you. Um, obviously, it will be baked from the administration's side, but it will give you a starting point to then react to and and modify as council sees fit. Um, but to give you a a starting point going forward of how we can start implementing that, especially with. New revenue potential there to help with those projects and maybe speed some of them along and and to the point of site saying sidewalks. Nobody's wedded to the fact that it has to be a sidewalk. Just we're providing safe passage around, especially around our schools to start.
Yeah, thank you, Minister Hill, and just I might add to that the um being able to, this is for design and being able to leverage safe routes to school funding. Um, our, I believe our match is ten percent for those programs if we if we're uh successful in those uh in that regard. So getting it to the design, I think it's uh that's essential. Uh, I would also say I believe we received an email. June from a father whose son is now in college, who has been asking for sidewalks since he started in kindergarten at one of the elementary schools, so. It's it is, to your point, Mister Levo, it's a question of, it is pedestrian safety as opposed to specifically chunk of concrete. Please.
I would just add that this doesn't respond to what the council has been asking for for the last year or so, which is a plan. And to say that um to come forward with it and when just put in sidewalks and just say it's only words, but not representative of what we're trying to do, I don't think really responds to what the council. Member, myself, I've been asking for, which is a holistic plan for safe mobility. And um. As we've all demonstrated and heard before, these projects are legacy projects because we cannot. Create safe mobility for our citizens through just building sidewalks. And to use words such as sidewalks do mean sidewalks. If we mean safe mobility, then we would say we want to design safe mobile access for our citizens. So words do matter because they convey what we're trying to say, which is we will never build. Our way out by building sidewalks. So let's not say sidewalks if we truly mean safe mobility. If we think that we represent sidewalks. I would just say that my concern is. That we, as a policy body, are, I don't feel we're being adequately responded to.
Fair enough. I think it is legacy, and so we can become the mom of culture and try to get that cleaned up. Um. Yeah, I would also, I I would add, though, that. Uh, particularly the Thirty Seventh Sidewalk at Brookside, the Thirty Seventh. Program has been something that they've examined various options. And again, I don't want to get into weeds here, but the the simple fact is, in the absence of. Of widening that section for pedestrians, which I, which is impossible without some sort of structure. We it would be a challenge, so maybe that's where that that is hanging on after all these decades. So. Consider it.
So from an engineering standpoint, if you ask somebody to design something around sidewalks, they're going to go for sidewalks. But if, when you change the word to mobility, it gives them a whole different. Criteria which to design, so I'm in agreement with changing the wording. Because if we don't, we are not going to get what. We're needing.
Thank you, colleagues, any other comments?
Yes, from me.
Oh, you're very small up there.
I know, I know, sorry. I I understand about the legacy of Thirty Seventh. And so my comments here don't necessarily have a footnote for that. But I agree completely with Lee with Councilmember Lebo. We have been, as a council, talking with our Public Works team. About making sure that we are looking holistically. And that we aren't talking about just street overlays and traffic calming and sidewalks. But that we're looking at an integrated whole to take advantage of the synergies. When you do things together as part of a common undertaking. And I realize that isn't the way that the city has done it traditionally, but it is what we have been asking, I think, for at least a few years. Or at least a couple of years, so I just want to put an exclamation point on that. Because from a policy perspective, I think we have been very clear. So making sure that we are expressing that. Focus on mobility and efficiency and coordination of these different programs into a cohesive whole. Is is really important, and as Councilmember Goldman says, I believe that Shoreline. Though I'm not very directly familiar with it, I believe that that's how they approach it in a holistic way. But even if they don't, we should. So I realize that that's a change from how we've traditionally handled this, but I think it's a, it's a good change. And one that will give us a better bang for the buck and and better mobility for our citizens. So I just wanted to weigh in on that because. I I like Councilmember Lebo, I feel like we've articulated this. Direction and I still don't see it reflected in the documents now. I'd be, I'm, I'm completely open to the fact that it's, there are changes behind the scenes and I hope so. So let's change the words and go forward together, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, sage advice, well said. Transportation, yes, because we're good.
We may not want to copy Shore Shoreline exactly because their mobility project is the one that removed all of their trees. So, I mean, if you're going to copy them, then maybe want to be careful of the trees. Because they sacrificed the trees for that mobility and people weren't happy.
Yeah, thank you, and it's going to cost, I believe, three hundred and sixty five million dollars to do their project, so.
They got a grant.
Colleagues. Try move on. Mr. Lebo. Okay, okay, then let's move on to. Things are percolating in sewer.
And to the sewer category, there's a couple of projects here. One is the lift station that's being currently being designed for Beach Drive. That is in somewhat of a response, both the two things. One is the fact that those lift stations are outdated and efficient and problematic. The other is that we do have our lakefront park that will be built probably in twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight timeframe. And we need, we'd like to get in there before we do all of that work and get the. Sewer line and the lift stations in a position that they're functional, they have battery backup. In case of emergencies, in the past, we've had to. Tank tanker trucks and and. Bail out the the main, and that was not, it's a challenging time, shall we say. So there's, again, there's two items there. In twenty twenty five, we've got roughly five hundred thousand dollars for the design to get that to a hundred percent. And and twenty twenty six, roughly two point six million to actually construct the project. The other item that's there is to start a master plan for the sewer line. System that we do have, so we do have four hundred thousand dollars to get that going, and that's in twenty twenty six. So those are the two items that we've got under the sewer category.
Thank you, questions, colleagues on sewer? Capital. I'm going to look to Jeff here about each, so I don't miss you, Laurie.
I'm fine, no comments or questions, thanks.
Fair enough. Let's see, moving on, if nobody has any questions about sewer, we can move on to storm water, surface water.
Okay, and this is the final category, and under L ninety, we've got the construction that we're planning to do in twenty twenty six. And that's a response to our understanding that Wash Dot will be doing their cover replacement in twenty twenty five. So we do have roughly three million in grant money to cover that. The other two items that we've got there. As part of the S map, S map program that we did last year, we are required to do some some efforts on the stormwater side of things. So we've got a retrofit, basically a filtering system that we've got estimated to be four hundred forty thousand dollars to make that improvement. Then finally, starting a master plan on the storm waters and surface water. We've got four hundred thousand dollars set aside for that in twenty twenty six. Again, those two items, they are highlighted in red. Therefore, we've again, some got some decisions to make and funding issues to address with that.
All these questions on storm water or surface water management? Vice Sheriff Tony.
So the location of that, the retrofit project is, it says on a parcel between Ballenger and Thirty Second, is that city property?
I believe it is, I will confirm with you, though. Okay.
All these other questions. Mr. Lebo.
Do we have any carryover projects that will carry into twenty twenty five that were funded in this current biennial? That would show up on this. Our material bins, are we done?
Oh, I can give an update on that one if you like.
But my question is, are there other projects? So is this intended to be all encompassing or just the new ones?
There's, there might be some projects that will spill over to twenty twenty five. They probably will be, will probably have contracts in front of you before that. But they they should be started at least this year.
Okay, but if there are any projects that haven't, otherwise would carry over when you have the full proposal?
Correct, if there are any incomplete projects that were not bid before, and I think we'll we'll know that. Before we bring the mayor's proposed budget to you, because that will be the final document that will reflect any of those.
Thank you.
Good question, John, thank you. Any other, I'm sorry, that's.
Material bins. Material bins.
Oh, yes, I can give an update on that. We did have five bidders for the project. The range was from four hundred, roughly four hundred forty thousand to six hundred or seven hundred and sixty thousand. So we did receive two bids over roughly four forty. Which is less than we anticipated, the engineer assessment was five hundred and five thousand. We're going to try moving quickly, as quickly as we can, maybe they can get that done by the end of the year. So we'll see.
So just to follow up, so there will be a council action coming forward?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Vice Sheriff Tony.
I've done, you can go.
Be first, but great, thanks.
So the question ahead of us on the storm water for itself. That master plan, do we have the staff capacity to do that? Because we just lost the project manager and all kinds of stuff like that, so are we on track for that?
Well, that that's the other point to make is we've got funding issues as well as staffing issues to be concerned about. That's why the master plan is put into twenty twenty six. Our hope is that we do have somebody by then.
All right. Thank you, that's a riddle.
I think a very similar question for all these larger data collection, master planning processes. Is there a a paired? Staffing need with that so that so we can understand kind of the the holistic cost of those types of projects? Or is it embedded in these costs?
Are you can.
Like staff hours?
Well, that's, that's why this, I would say the C I P is a little bit on the lean side. If we were fully staffed with, I would say, the storm water. Manager as well as two, two project managers, this would not be a problem. But again, we are. Running on.
But this number is doable with our staff time plus whatever consultants or engineers we need? Is that kind of what you're showing here?
So on on the C I P, we don't show staff time, we don't, we don't calculate staff time into the project. This is just what we need for outside services.
Thank you, okay, so that's an additional element that would need to happen in order for these to be successful, thank you.
Okay, should we move on? Any other questions? Thoughts, criticisms? Perrigo a joke?
I'm out of. If I could, just back to Councilmember Lebo's point and Deputy Mayor Boad's point, I think we we've heard you loud and clear. I think we've got to figure out the best way to represent the road and walkway projects in the C I P. To match with the direction that we have heard from the council. So we'll work on that here for presentation in the. Mayor's proposed budget, and as I said. Jeff is working with our consultants to bring that holistic, that that's a program that council is going to have to approve. We need to make sure that within the C I P, that's represented and we'll we'll put our heads together and find out the best way to to reflect that here. And bring that back to you for your consideration.
And to council members of Bodhi's comment about Shoreline, we did present the matrix that they use to transpo and. The breadth that it took, it's, it's a, it's going to be a big, if we, if we try to reproduce that, it's going to be a heavy lift for us. Cost wise and time wise.
Thank you, Mr. Perrigo. I think that the the bigger picture here, folks, is that we're in a transitional period when it comes to. Some of these pedestrian multimodal projects, and I think that the. The holistic approach is essential, as we've done on speed setting. I think that we're also going to have to not only just look at it holistically, but there's going to have to be a very robust community conversation about where the priorities. Are because as you review the safe streets and safe highways plans. From two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, respectively, some of the priorities have have shifted slightly, I wouldn't say completely. But we need to revalidate that and not reinvent the.
The wheel.
You had to say it, sorry, I was trying not to, trying to think of another way, but without reinventing the whole thing, the program is trying to find. A way to make it so that it is palpable, palatable to the community in a way that addresses their immediate needs. But the longer term program is going to take some time to spool up from the standpoint of. Resourcing particularly, both on the capital funding side as well as the staffing side, so. Yes.
Was Transpo the age, the company that Shoreline used? For their mobility?
I can't speak to that, I don't think, I don't know.
Because my question would be, would there be someone that would, might be more cost effective? And number two, is that something that the tickets or traffic cams would pay for?
Absolutely, that would be something that would be, would be eligible for the use of under state statute, yes.
Possibly there's an agency out there that is more adaptive doing multimodal design than transport.
Have to.
Just a question.
Come on that one.
Have to look around.
Colleagues, other questions for Mr. Perrigo, and we know we have some people waiting for M C J in the wings here. Okay, thank you very much, Director Perrigo. And with that, we're moving on, Director Hoffman is going to bring us an overview of the committee survey, open house. And the planning commission recommendation on the draft twenty 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 four periodic update of the comprehensive plan. Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Mark Hoffman, Community Development Director. This is an exciting moment that we've been looking forward to for quite some time. We've made an attempt to keep you updated throughout this year, but I don't want to presume. That the council is aware of every element, so feel free to interrupt, ask questions, no matter what they are. But I'll get, I'll start with a little background, and then Christina Hayworth has a more formal presentation, more fitting to the agenda item. That was given at the planning commission and addresses the community survey, the open house and begins the. Final task tonight, which is where do we go from here? So by way of background. Mostly for the recording. In the past, every eight years. Growth Management Act required cities and counties to update their comprehensive plan. It's the guiding visioning document for decision making of the city. During COVID, they gave an extension to King County cities, the four metro P S R C counties. And now it's every ten years, so after this round, the periodic update will occur every ten years. It extends the planning window out an additional ten years. This effort goes out to twenty forty four. And consists of a variety of purposes. The one that you've primarily heard about is consistency with legislation. Consistently with regional plans like Vision twenty fifty through U G Sound Regional Council. And consistency with King County countywide planning policies. At a more local level, it's the vision, policy, goals of the community, it's the voice of the community. It's a two part effort. Say a two gear effort with the second year being two parts. The first year, twenty twenty three, was commerce grants, preparation, contract with S E J. Alliance for consulting to get this effort done and visioning mission. Getting the planning commission warmed up, the second year, two parts, planning commission recommendation. We are nearing that recommendation now. The second aspect of that is a complete review by the city council and the community, and then action, adoption. Growth Management Act would like us to adopt this update by December thirty first, twenty twenty four. The the periodic update grant was satisfied, we're fully reimbursed. The S C J contract for consulting services runs through the end of the year. An update on planning commission, they went through a series of special and regular meetings to go through each individual element of the comprehensive plan. Here, analysis and suggestions from the consultants, including Leland. For housing, fair and peers for transportation, and then suggest amendments. Originally, we thought we would go from January to June and then transition to council. It took a little extra time at the end to get it right. In August, we took a measure of where we were at. We had an optimistic schedule and a more realistic schedule. We asked the planning commission after the open house and their public hearing, would they like it some additional time to make final comments and review? It's a lengthy document and they chose to. So where it currently stands is we anticipate on September tenth. To hold that final discussion, final comments, get a consensus and make a recommendation. Therefore, tonight. Even though we don't have a binder as originally intended, saying this is the recommended copy. We have a current working draft on the website that represents that document. There will be changes made, and Christina will go through what that document contains as of this moment. But at some point, there will be a binder, there will be a transferring of the record, an extensive review. And then the question ended tonight is how, how would the individual council members like to achieve that? And how can we facilitate that? So I don't have a formal presentation, I would like if S E J can go through theirs. Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions prior to that presentation?
Any other questions? Ask me, ready? Okay, maybe Christina, would you like to dive right in?
I certainly would. Good evening. Uh, I am very happy to be here today to talk about this project. Uh, as uh, as Director Hoffman said, I do have a short presentation to share with you. Um, please feel free to interrupt at any time with questions. I will not be able to see you while I'm sharing my screen, so just interrupt me. Um, but I do also have a slide uh, for questions at the end. Uh, with that, I am going to bring up my slide deck. Can everyone see this?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Lovely. Okay. Uh, so here we are, a, our first uh, kind of comprehensive briefing to begin the handoff process from planning commission to city council for the twenty twenty four comp plan update. Tonight's meeting will cover the major public engagement events to date. Talk a little bit about the current status of the document and then prep you for future work by discussing the framework and guidance that the planning commission has received that's informed the work that we've done so far. I'll start by discussing the community survey. Uh, we had a really great response rate. We had nine hundred and thirty-two respondents, which is about seven percent uh, give or take of the population. This is fantastic and I'd like to give a special shout out to uh, Commissioner Lois Lee, who provided an incentive prize for this survey uh, that I think drove some pretty significant participation. But also thank you to all who participated or helped get the word out. Um, just, it was a, it was a great showing and we got a lot of excellent feedback. Um, some key takeaways from the survey are, uh, there was a strong alignment in respondents with the current vision statement. Uh, we have made very few recommended updates to that vision statement. Um, there, overall, the, the feedback we got is that there is some more work needed to continue advancing the infrastructure priorities that are described in that vision statement specifically for active transportation modes. Um, and to continue advancing the city's work on inclusivity. Uh, regional collaboration also appeared in uh, in this category, although I think it's likely that regional collaboration is maybe less well understood. Um, and potentially uh, could just benefit from some educational opportunities about what regional collaboration really means and what the city is doing about uh, collaborating with its peers and with other agencies and uh, governments active in the city. Uh, priorities were also identified by respondents. I'm sure none of this is going to come as a surprise and you'll see that this is pretty thematically consistent. Um, but people really appreciate safety, protecting green spaces and increasing the number and variety of recreational opportunities within the city. Respondents also identified community values. Um, here's where you, you'll start to see the themes reappearing. Uh, people really value safe and walkable neighborhoods, beautiful parks, trails and open spaces, high quality schools that are accessible to students in Lake Forest Park, uh, compact and inviting walkable town center with convenient businesses and services. Um, I mentioned the consistent themes, those really focus on safety primarily related to pedestrian and or bicycle infrastructure, environmental conservation or preservation, and the expansion of parks, recreation, open space and trails facilities. Um, there was a really interesting and notable desire to expand the, the character and range of businesses in town center and other commercial nodes. And this is something that we explored a little bit further in the open house. We asked some, some specific questions about housing. As you all know, there are some big changes that Lake Forest Park is required to comply with from some of the recent legislative sessions. Uh, so we started to probe this topic a little bit. We found that there's a strong preference to preserve the, the character defining features of single-family detached residential neighborhoods. This is typically the form and the scale of those buildings. Um, at the same time, people see a value in creating a range of affordability levels and housing types to serve a much broader range of um, family compositions and lifestyles and life stages. Um, folks were interested in allowing mixed-use development and also in allowing certain kinds of middle housing. Middle housing is a requirement that Lake Forest Park is going to need to address in um, in the coming year. And so having a good understanding of which types of middle housing are most appealing was really valuable. Um, they tended toward the lower intensity side of the middle housing spectrum with things like duplexes, triplexes and cottage housing being more desirable than some of the higher intensity cottage core multiplex type of units that trend toward more apartment style. Uh, with these new housing types, people were a little bit more concerned about the potential for environmental impacts, reduction of urban tree canopy coverage, uh, issues related to non-motorized safety and um, incompatibility with the form and scale of the single-family residential development that already exists in the city. We asked some specific questions too about transportation and infrastructure. And really what floated to the surface was a strong desire for better walking and biking infrastructure. And that included maintenance on existing infrastructure, improvements on existing infrastructure and um, expanding infrastructure to connect neighborhoods to places where people want to go so that they have a more options than just driving. Uh, there were some comments related to planning a bit more cohesively for utilities and utility improvement projects, uh, as well as again, maintaining and enhancing parks, recreational facilities um, and things of that nature. Our final big chunk of questions was about environmental stewardship. And here the priorities that respondents were interested in uh, included protecting and enhancing natural areas and wildlife habitats, uh, maintaining and expanding the urban tree canopy, uh, which has, has been a, a consistent project for the city for some time. Expanding pedestrian infrastructure and more effectively treating stormwater to avoid potential impacts to stream environments and to Lake Washington. Are there any questions on the survey before I move on to the open house?
Colleagues, questions? On the survey?
Yes.
Councilman Riddle?
Were there any surprises that surprised you?
There were some very interesting written comments uh, that had um, there, there were some people that were frustrated that the city was moving slowly to accept more density. And um, it was, I, I would say it was surprising to, to hear since that isn't really what um, what I've heard a lot so far uh, in this process. But I think that it's a valuable perspective to have shown up in the survey results and I was very gratified to see it.
Thank you.
Colleagues, any questions of the survey? Thank you.
Okay.
Please continue.
All right, open house. So we held an open house to introduce the current draft of the updated comprehensive plan uh, about a month ago, July sixteenth at the Third Place Commons. We had about forty-five to fifty attendees and it was staffed by uh, city staff, consultant staff, planning commissioners and a couple of city council members also appeared. Um, it was a great way to represent the project and to start getting some feedback from members of the public on some of these big changes that were coming. We had uh, six stations and I'm going to go through the key findings on a few. Some of them were, were educational only. What is a comprehensive plan? What are the legislative changes that we're planning for? But I'm going to go through the findings on the, the ones where we asked people for more feedback. Uh, so on the transportation station, this is really consistent with what came out of the survey. We found a strong desire for investment in pedestrian safety improvements, including mentions of speed control and traffic calming and other um, more uh, built interventions to help address that more fully. Um, people really like the existing bike facilities, but would like to see that network expanded. Uh, and then folks also commented on the lack of public transportation and a desire to broaden that network and to start interconnecting things a little bit better. In the housing station, we heard some more interest in expanded housing options. Uh, and we started to get some interest in some of the, the middle density options, uh, triplexes and fourplexes. These are still on the, the lower side, but more towards the middle of density. Um, uh, and then the cottages again, uh, which are an excellent tool to respond to properties that have environmental constraints like critical areas buffers. Uh, we, despite this interest, did still have a very strong interest in preserving the form, scale, character of the existing single-family neighborhoods that are already here today. Um, and then similar concerns related to reduction in tree canopy, potential increase in environmental impacts, um, more traffic and some of the other typical concerns that we would expect to come up when we're talking about potentially increasing density even by a marginal amount. We also asked a little bit more about economic development. Um, and we found uh, an interest in expanding neighborhood serving commercial options. So looking at commercial opportunities beyond the town center, um, things like the, the local one oh four corner, where could those kinds of neighborhood serving uses locate? Um, and what kinds of uses might be valuable? Uh, and what might, might those kinds of developments look like? Um, we offered a few options and people kind of keyed to the map uh, where they thought those types of buildings could go. Um, and most of them clustered along Ballenger Way, probably unsurprisingly to anyone. Um, but uh, there were a few intersections that uh, were identified that might be worth evaluating further. Overall, there was a strong stated preference to maintain and expand tree canopy and to protect the health of streams and the ravines that were surrounding the stream corridors, especially when we're considering higher density or higher intensity development scenarios. We also found ourselves uh, educating on some pretty consistent topics. And this may be a place where the city wants to invest a little more effort to do some broader education in its future outreach. That includes reassuring people that new development is still going to be subject to adopted zoning and critical areas requirements. So for example, even though new housing types might be allowed, uh, that's not a blanket pass on any of the requirements for dimensional standards related either to the zoning code or to critical areas and their buffers. Middle housing alternatives and accessory dwelling units create a lot of opportunities beyond just serving a variety of incomes. That includes serving many more lifestyles from first-time home buyers, um, service workers, all the way to people hoping to downsize but remain in their community with their good social connections and all of the things that they're comfortable with. Um, so uh, just really kind of driving home the fact that this serves more than just an affordability purpose. Um, associated with new development, reminding people that that creates opportunities to make certain kinds of transportation improvements, including active transportation improvements, like the provision of more sidewalks alongside any new development uh, or city investment. And then, um, of course, the city is embarking on its climate planning project. Uh, and there will be further education about that and all things related to greenhouse gas emissions and resilience uh, in kind of the broader climate change umbrella. Any questions on the open house before I move on?
Colleagues, questions, Christina, on this topic on the open house? Uh, I know several of us attended. Mr. Goldman, please.
Um, yes, thanks. Uh, overall, if you compare the open house and the survey, were the responses generally in agreement? Or were there some divergences?
They were overall very consistent. Um, we found uh, I, I think through the, the discussion process uh, and the, the education process with people who were attending the open house, um, there was a little bit more acceptance of some of the higher density alternatives for middle housing. Uh, we also got to dive a little bit deeper into that neighborhood serving commercial question than we did in the survey. But uh, there were no real, totally out of left field surprises that came from the open house based on what we had found in the survey.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Thanks. Any other questions? Okay. I, I would echo the, there was a, quite an underlying theme too of the neighborhood business question. Um, several people commented on that and wanting to expand accessibility to walk to local uh, local businesses. Okay. No other questions? Please continue.
Thank you. All right. Uh, so the status of the current document, um, we have a draft. It is posted on the project website. Uh, we held a public hearing with the planning commission on August thirteenth. Uh, we had two people attend and testify. Um, there were, I think, some other attendees who did not testify. Uh, people, the testimony was, um, we had one person object to the inclusion of climate policies and language focused on diversity, equity and inclusion. And we had one person who explained um, potential impacts related to allowing development through reasonable use exceptions in critical areas. Um, the, there are not a lot of things that I can in good faith recommend to address those comments. Um, the city is obligated to plan for climate change. Uh, and there are plenty of policies from the Department of Commerce's Growth Management Planning guidance through Vision twenty fifty from the Puget Sound Regional Council and King County Countywide Planning Policies that ask the city to incorporate diversity, equity and inclusion language. Um, and so I'm not going to be able to recommend changes based on that individual's testimony. Uh, and then development related to the reasonable use exception is um, more on the implementation side of things. Uh, and that's something that we will evaluate um, with the code amendments that are required as well. Um, uh, following this project. Um, so that said, the upcoming changes that we should expect to see in the document going forward are um, we have received final comments from the tree board, the park board and the police department. Those have been incorporated in the draft that's posted online. We are collecting the last few sets of review comments from planning commissioners. I'm still expecting at least one more set and I've got a couple of people that I haven't heard from either uh, affirmatively or not about whether they will be providing comments. Um, assuming that we get all of those early this week, then we should have a fully revised version by the end of next week uh, for review and acceptance, hopefully uh, at the planning commission's next September tenth meeting. Um, alongside incorporating these last sets of review comments are some cleanup efforts, including addressing some outstanding placeholders, uh, collecting the last remaining outstanding pieces of data for capital facilities, utilities and transportation. Um, and then uh, once we do have that recommended draft from the planning commission, we'll be working on updating graphics, photos, charts, all of that good stuff. Um, the only reason that we're deferring that until after is that we want to make sure that we're really efficient in making changes to this document. Um, but that is the plan uh, for that document going forward. It should be um, the text version should be polished and ready for recommendation at the planning commission September tenth meeting with all of the graphic elements updated shortly thereafter. Questions on the current document?
So, uh, fellow colleagues, I just want to say what's interesting to me because I've been participating in the sound cities meetings is that a lot of other jurisdictions are having just a lot of people come out, uh, whether it's to planning commission meetings or open houses or so forth with a lot of commentary. And so I'm surprised because we've tried to publicize things as much as possible. We did get a good survey response. Um, and yet uh, for the public sessions, we really have had uh, very few people show up. Uh, even fifty people um, in our city uh, is not very many um, for the open house. So um, uh, I just, I'm just noting that I don't know if people haven't had a chance to absorb everything because there are a lot of changes here. And it, you, you wouldn't recognize the current draft because of how much editing has occurred um, from the previous version. Uh, you wouldn't. Uh, you wouldn't really see a lot of remnants of the previous version. So I just wanted to make that comment. I'm, I'm actually quite surprised. So I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bodie. Colleagues, questions, comments?
Possibly if you're going to message on the property, maybe message on this plan to remind people that it's there to be reviewed.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion. Thank you. Colleagues, other questions? There's comments? Mr. Hoffman, did you want to comment?
We, uh, we had the formal presentation. We were hoping for a lot of comments of where do we go from here to December, however long. Uh, more in the committee of the whole setting and more of a dialogue. We intend to transmit the, the recommended draft to the council and then utilize your time as best fits you and the community. We've been trying to get the word out. We have additional e-blast, additional newsletters already scheduled. We can do more. Um, our, our outreach budget, um, I could say is stretched, but we're, we have some in reserve for, for the end. Um, typically, when everything is going well, there's a lot of silence. But then there's the possibility of an action being taken and that's when the turnout really increases. And so I, 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 I don't think it'll continue at this quiet pace. I hope not. Uh, but that said, also, a lot of other jurisdictions, um, are not tier three cities for mental housing or that represents a drastic change for them. Uh, and this is not the development regulations. This incorporates some housing policies that are consistent with the vision that was already in the comprehensive plan. So I wouldn't say it's a backtracking or a drastic increase. Where that will hit the road is the actual development regulations that apply to a very singular piece of property, such as your neighbors or yours. Uh, and we have the five hundred thousand dollar grant from Commerce. We have the contract with SCJ. That is going to, going to start at planning commission immediately after their recommendation. In fact, the same night. Uh, and we need to have a, an adopted development regulation ordinance in place by June thirty first of twenty twenty five, or this city will be subject to the model ordinance that Commerce has in place. So that urgency and that topic is coming. Um, but other than that, we're open to where we go from here. Styles of meetings, what we can do to get the word out, what we can do to help you review all of the extensive, uh, changes, recommendations.
I'm glad I let you talk first because that was my question. Um, I think it would be helpful for us to have some form of a joint meeting with planning commission to be able to ask them kind of where they, what their thinking was behind things if there's questions, um, so that we all kind of hear together at the same time. So I think that would be useful to have kind of a joint work session. Cow, something, planning commission meeting. I don't know who, who hosts it, but, um, I like that idea.
Absolutely. Um, at the, after the public hearing was closed, they had a discussion about closing their effort and what comes next. And how do they then participate in this periodic update until it's adopted or after? Uh, and then Councilmember Lebo, uh, suggested that enforce your welcome to go. Um, but we could also use that tool of a joint, joint meeting. Um, but we definitely intend to convey the message. And if there's any singular topic that he would like their feedback on or reasoning behind or further conversation, this is legislative, all the way up to the point of action and they're willing. They are leery of any additional special meetings. I'm very excited about your process.
Deputy Reebody.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, I was trying to think back to the, um, town center, uh, process, which was regulations and not, uh, the comprehensive plan. So I was trying to think back though to the mechanisms that we used. And, uh, I think, I think, uh, you know, some, so I support what Councilmember Riddle said. Having some kind of, uh, and especially initial handoff conversation with the planning commission, um, would probably be helpful. I think, uh, as in the planning commission going topic by topic or section by section might, might be good. And then allowing some working session time because, uh, my recollection is council members do sometimes want to change the wording, change the language and so forth. So, uh, 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 you know, kind of a hybrid approach where we have a general overview and then we have a page by page discussion, um, uh, as you did with the planning commission, would still be very helpful.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bodie.
Is, is there more, uh, community engagement meetings planned for any of this?
There, there's constant outreach. The public participation plan is two years. So it hasn't been completed as far as identifiable steps that aren't e-blasts and news and council meetings. It's the public hearing that's required by city council.
Possibly, um, you know, doing another open house, but on a council meeting day in conjunction with before, maybe.
And, and we can explore titles, purposes, um, and characterize the, the meeting as an open house or an opportunity. But public comment every chance, uh, until you're faced with a, you know, action.
Thank you, Councilmember. Friends, any other questions, comments?
Has there been a citywide mailer or something that has gone out yet? Anything of that nature?
There has and, and, um,
No, I probably got it, but.
Yeah, that was the postcard for the survey. You know, at the time, uh, outreach was going, but we had much in reserve for notice, notification and trying to honor the contract. We spent an awful lot on just sending out that postcard, nearly five thousand dollars citywide, hoping that at that point, we would maximize awareness and then use the project page and electronic website type, uh, tools. And then also reserve enough for the required public noticing for the public hearings and whatever else were, uh, asked.
I think it was effective given our response rate on the survey. So if there is an ability to do one of those as we're moving into um, some of our, one of our meetings, maybe the public hearing itself, um, and notice it, but also do a, a mailer.
Mark, I would be happy to spend some time looking at the project budget with you to see how we could support that.
We, we tried to stay conservative and within the bounds and we're doing quite well. But we also know that it's August and December's coming, uh, and we don't want to go over. But anything that we can do, we intend to. That the list is updatable and then it's, it's, it's purely the, the function of what it costs for postage, the printing, the.
Designing.
Well, design, we have, have kind of in-house and a head start.
I love that. But I would, I, I would encourage us to think of that as a way to reach out to our community, uh, to get them to come to the public hearing.
And it just fired another neuron. Another opportunity in September is the housing summit sponsored by the community. Uh, and the mayor and I are both going to be there.
In September, yes.
Yeah, I think it's the eighteenth.
Always. Other questions for Director Hoffman or for Christina? Was there any additional?
Um, I do have a few more slides that talk about the, the framework that the planning commission has been using. I, I could save that for next time if you'd rather move on. Um, it's more, um, kind of an introduction to what are we required to do and how are we doing it? Uh, just to preface your work in the document, uh, but I, I can hold those for next time if you.
Christina, please, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Uh, would you, colleagues, shall we carry on? Let's, please, let's go, let's go ahead.
Okay, fantastic. All right then. Um, oh, sorry. Uh, before I get to that, uh, here's a, here's a brief schedule. This is updated from the schedule that was presented last week to planning commission. Um, so this notes that we are taking last planning commission comments, any public comments that trickle in through the website. Um, and we plan to get those incorporated by late August, like I mentioned, uh, with a final recommendation draft along with an implementation strategy for the planning commission to review at their September tenth meeting. Tonight, it begins our transition from planning commission to city council with this briefing. Um, and then we're looking ahead to kind of your first review sometime, probably more likely in September, once they have their recommendation done. Okay, so the plan update framework and guidance that planning commission has been using. I've shared these slide, most of these slides, uh, pretty much every single working meeting the planning commission has had this year. They probably dream about these slides at this point. Um, okay, so what are we trying to do? Right now, we are updating our comprehensive plan and one of our primary objectives is regulatory compliance with the Growth Management Act and its various recent amendments with the Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2050 and its multi-county planning policies and with King County's countywide planning policies. In the center of all of this is Lake Forest Park's comprehensive plan. And what Lake Forest Park does with this regulatory framework is, um, it can choose to adapt, um, and respond to all of these different policy requirements in a way that makes sense for this community. What we have to guide that is the community vision and priorities. The vision and priorities were vetted through the community survey. And as you'll see in the current version of the document, we made, I think, only one change to the date um, in that vision because it was just overwhelmingly consistent with the community's current stance. Uh, and what that vision boils down to is a balance of environmental preservation and enhancement, economic vitality and growth, um, and residential neighborhoods that are safe and welcoming. That includes supporting diverse cultures and perspectives, enhancing the vibrancy of town center and maybe, maybe looking a little bit beyond that now. Uh, and, uh, developing safe and well-connected neighborhoods where families can roam freely. To do that, we are using this policy framework that breaks down how we approach implementation essentially. So goals are the highest level description of how we move toward the vision. They're typically intentionally fairly vague. Uh, they use words like facilitate or promote, but they don't have a lot of really actionable language in them. Um, what, what happens from the goal is we start to develop policies to break down our approach to achieving that goal. Policies are moderately specific, uh, but they lend themselves to actions. Actions are our implementation steps. These are discrete actions that, when taken, move us toward advancing that policy, advancing that goal and thereby advancing the community's vision so that we are consistently moving toward that vision over the next twenty years with every decision that we're making. I also wanted to offer at this point a primer on equity since there are a, um, a lot of different terms uh, that are floating around out there, um, for the purposes of this plan. Um, the, the information that I shared with planning commission is here. Um, so I've got a graphic that I hope, um, is fairly recognizable. This graphic demonstrates visually some of the different terms, equity, um, sorry, inequality, equality, equity and justice. There's a lot of equity forward language emphasized in recent Growth Management Act legislation as well as the guidance that's being developed by the Department of Commerce. Um, also within Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2050 and King County's countywide planning policies. So we want to make sure that this language is appearing in the language that we are recommending, um, and moving through the process. So, um, I'm just going to describe this, um, briefly, but if we've, we've got any questions, please let me know. Uh, so inequality here is, uh, shown in the top left. Uh, you can see that there is an unequal access to opportunities, in this case represented by apples in the tree. The child on the left has many more apples available to them that fall directly into their open hands, whereas the child on the right doesn't have that same, um, access or ease of obtaining those opportunities of apples. Below that is equality and this means that everybody is given the same tool to help them advance. Um, in this case, that means that the child on the left has a very easy time climbing up that ladder and grabbing an apple straight off the tree. The child on the right has the exact same ladder, but still can't reach those apples, still unequal uh, in, in access because the tool doesn't really fit the circumstances. Then we look at equity in the top right. This is where we start to see some, some true consideration of circumstances. So the tree is bent towards the left. It's one of the reasons why the child on the left has an easier time eating those apples. So the child on the right is given a taller ladder because the circumstances dictate that that person needs a taller ladder to reach the apples that are available to them. At this point, we haven't addressed the distribution of those apples, but that's what we do when we start to look at this justice quadrant. Uh, so on the lower right, uh, in this case, the slant of the tree or the system has been adjusted so that apples are growing more consistently evenly across the tree. And everybody just needs the exact same stuff to get those apples. The child, the children in this image both have the exact same ladder. They both have equal access to their apples. Um, so just as a frame of reference, as we're starting to talk about equity, um, and incorporating that into the plan going forward, uh, we want to make sure that we're considering the specific needs or circumstances of a person or a group of people and providing the resources that those people need so that they have that same access that other people enjoy. Um, at this point, the language promulgated by Department of Commerce, PSRC and King County are focused on equity. Um, there is some language, especially in the climate realm, that starts to relate to justice. Um, but for the comprehensive plan as we are, um, working with it today, uh, is primarily, the expectation primarily is focused on equity. Uh, so I wanted to just offer that as a brief educational, um, moment so that as we move forward and discuss equity, uh, everybody is kind of on the same page about what these different terms mean. With that, I will open it up for any additional questions. Um, I will make this slide deck available in case anybody wants to memorize the last three slides before I see you again. Um, and, uh, yeah, if, if there's anything I can explain further, I'd be happy to.
That'll be a quiz in the morning, everyone. Vice Chair Ferrati.
And thank you, Ms. Hayward, for a great presentation. I also want to point out to my colleagues, if you go one slide further, there's actually a really nice equity review and evaluation thing that allows you to basically kind of operationalize some of the things you've been saying uh, on the much broader scale. So thanks.
Thank you, Tracy. Colleagues, questions? Ms. Hayward, Mr. Hoffman. Great. Well, thank you very much, Christina.
I have one more comment.
Please.
At the risk of derailing your understanding, what this is not is an annual docketing amendment of the comprehensive plan. This will fulfill the Growth Management Act's periodic update and we're on track. We also have waiting in the wings, a five hundred thousand dollar grant, uh, from Commerce for the climate element. It's similar to this process, but it's to establish a standalone climate element. We've begun that work by, you know, incorporating policy into the various sections in this periodic update. The planning commission through the climate policy advisory team, um, will be doing the same effort between now and June um, to come up with a, uh, an annual voluntarily voluntary docketing amendment to the comprehensive plan to fulfill that, uh, Commerce grant. Um, uh, by way of update, we did an RFQ, we received seven submittals, interviewed four, uh, and made a recommendation and we anticipated on September twelfth, bringing a negotiated contract with that recommendation to the council to begin that work between now and June. Unlike middle housing, the deadline is June twenty twenty five, but it's worded in the Commerce, uh, grant for a rev, uh, an action draft. So it doesn't have to make it through the entire process, be adopted in order to fulfill that requirement. And, uh, I'll close with that would be four years early for the city, uh, such as Lake Forest Park. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hoffman. Thank you very much, Christina. Have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you, you as well. Good night.
Take care. Okay, well, since this is a special meeting, we can't discuss any other business. So with that, I bid you all a very good night. Insistently.